Good evening, thank you for coming out. This is the Pleasantville City Council Work Meeting. Today is Monday, October 7th, 2019. The time is 6:30 PM. This meeting has been advertised in the local newspapers and performance with the Open Public Media Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Roll call please.
Swan.
Here.
Sisflunk.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Harmon.
Christmas.
Here.
Davenport.
Ward.
Here.
Six of the town.
I'd like to have a vote for the previous minutes.
Motion.
Sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any names or extensions? All right, Samuel. Okay. Please take my way. Okay, first we have is the Oval Office.
Yes.
Deputy Chief.
Yes. Okay, Eugene. I can call Eugene now, Beth, that's where you're at. How's that? That okay? You look like you're stretching. Okay, ready? All right, I'm gonna say aye and you state your name, then. Aye.
Aye, Eugene Orwell, Junior.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And the government.
And the government.
Established.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of fire deputy chief.
Of fire deputy chief.
For the city of Pleasantville.
For the city of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my bill.
To the best of my bill.
So help me God.
Okay, glad to hear it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Deputy Chief Wellington.
Deputy Chief. I just wanna wish you well, you deserve it, and like you said, it's been a long time coming. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for everything.
Congratulations Deputy Chief Wellington. I get great attitude and great spirit and everything, that's the tone. I said it all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Deputy Chief, I'm admiring those stripes on the street. Each one of those is five years or four? Five?
Four.
Four years, five or four, yes, okay. Remind me of Navy days.
I'll be Captain of the Navy, yes.
About four years.
Thank you.
Word up, Dan. Okay, take care.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Speaker.
First victim is ordinance number 11, second reading, public care and need. We have our door in this session. It's authorizing the acquisition of various technical equipment for the city to increase the sum of $300,000 and authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds or bond anticipated notes in aggregate principal amount of up to $285,000, making certain determinations and covenants and authorizing certain related actions in connection with the board.
Okay, we don't have a second reading on this, but is there any questions or comments? Okay, next please.
Ordinance number 12, second reading, amended and supplementing, chapter 278, article 13, entitled vehicles and school areas.
Any questions or comments? Next please.
Ordinance number 13, first reading, adopt amendments to a redevelopment plan for the California Avenue redevelopment track in the city.
Would you like to explain this, please?
Sure, Beth. Within the past few months, there were a number of potential developers focusing on the medical marijuana coming into Pleasantville and looking for potential sites. In that dialogue with them, the California Avenue site was raised, and the issue that took place there is that as it is currently approved under the redevelopment plan, the light industrial use is not permitted. So some of those folks, it might have been interesting to sort of defer somewhat because we would have to change this area. Those efforts by those individuals are now passed, and they are no longer an issue. The municipality was still met with the issue of the California Avenue redevelopment area, and what is the appropriate use for that? It seems that it's better designed for light industrial than for residential, which is what it is now under the plan. So this proposal to make this change was sent to the planning board to ensure that what is contained here, making the change to light industrial, is consistent with your master plan. I think we're conclusive that it was, so this matter now comes before council on first reading, and should council pass this ordinance on first and second reading, we will then be able, in that California Avenue redevelopment area, to do light industrial, which right now we are not committed to do. I know as council knows, this is the 28th parcel totally unbinding the municipality, so there may be a prime development opportunity someplace down the road through the city as we move this towards light industrial.
Any questions or comments?
Yes. This is ordinance 13. Said it was a first reading.
Yes.
Is it supposed to be indicated?
Yes, it was.
I'm saying it's not indicated on the agenda as first reading.
No, but it's still on the original as first reading.
Okay.
Do you have questions or comments?
Resolution 155, authorizing the issuance of sale of up to $4,579,000 of general obligation bonds, Series 2019, making certain covenants to maintain the exemption of the interest on said bonds from federal income taxation, and authorizing further actions and making such determinations as may be necessary to effectuate the issuance and sale of the bonds.
Are there any questions or comments? Next please.
Resolution 156, support from the local government body authorizing the direct install grant application funded by the New Jersey Clean Energy Program incentive, and a zero interest loan from the South Jersey Gas.
Thank you. I'd like Mrs. Stevens to explain this when we are discussing the financing. Where they want to get it.
As stated in the title, it is a direct install grant that the city is really sitting out, like if there's a 20% match, that the city is looking to submit to South Jersey Gas for a 0% loan. This grant will allow three of the buildings, you have the entire city owned facilities within the city of Pleasantville, assessed as it relates to R lighting and HVAC. That being said, the assessment came back, and we thought that it would be beneficial for the city based on the numbers that were presented to us, that would make us eligible for savings. We have the primary department in the city hall and the fireworks building that would be getting the upgrades, and that would be in addition to the HVAC upgrades.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
Resolution 157, authorizing the tax collector to charge a notice fee for the electronic tax year, tax sale year for year 2019.
Any questions or comments? Next please.
Resolution 158, grant approved for a car lot to the Pleasantville, New Jersey, on October 20th, 2019.
Questions or comments? None, please.
Resolution 159, authorizing the city to enter into a host agreement with MPX, New Jersey LLC regarding property located at 11 Devens Lane.
Any question?
What is the host agreement with MPX, MPX? Could we also do, in terms of explaining this, 160 at the same time? Could the clerk also read 160? If the explanation was too...
Resolution 160, authorizing entry to amended redevelopment agreement with RGC3 LLC, a conditional redeveloper for the 11 Devens Lane redevelopment area.
Okay, let's start with 160. 11 Devens Lane, in generic terms, is the old Atlantic City West Building. It's that entire site, it includes between nine and 10 acres. Through 2018, municipality engaged conversation with RGC3 and another LLC that resulted in them being designated as the redeveloper for the area. At that point in time, RGC3 was interested itself in pursuing license from the state of New Jersey to grow medical marijuana and process. They did not go forward with that, but they still ended up owning the land. And what 160 does is it changes the redevelopment plan from those provisions that had RGC3 as not only the owner, but also the operator of a facility there. They are not going to be the operator of a facility, and that's where resolution 159 comes in, because RGC3 is entering into a lease agreement with MPX. MPX does have a license to grow medical marijuana and produce the appropriate product. So right now, we're looking at a relationship between RGC3 and MPX on the Devens Lane property. When we talk about resolution 159 and what that cooperation agreement is, that agreement, as authorized by 159, is the agreement pursuant to which the municipality will be receiving a fee from MPX. That fee to be paid to the municipality is based upon the sales of MPX. To the extent that they have wholesale sales, they will be paying off of their wholesale gross number, 1.5% to the city. That will go on for three years. When we get to the fourth year, that 1.5% will go to 2%. So the agreement that is authorized under 159 is the agreement that gives the detail on that. And within that agreement, there are definitions of what wholesale is and what goes into it. There is operational language that if it should go to retail sales there, that we will also get a piece of that number and how all those calculations are done. But generally speaking, when we look at what's going to go on over there, it's going to start in the 32,000 square foot building that is still sitting there. The primary construction that many years ago has torn down, the remains of 32,000 square foot building, that MPX should be in by December 1, and they will begin growing by that point in time.
Have they been state approved already?
Yes.
Oh, so they were awarded.
They were awarded.
Okay, they were, okay.
That's not the round that gave us our initiative on California Avenue.
I understand.
California Avenue was a later round, but the round prior to that, MPX was licensed. So they are licensed to go there. And 159 basically defines your relationship with them and how your revenue stream will be established. But back to 160, 160 now goes to amend the redevelopment agreement with the owner of the property, RGC3, or amending it because, as I said earlier, at one point, they would be the operator also. They are no longer the operator, so this now amends that agreement to have them as the owner, to have them, a necessity to be involved with MPX when MPX builds another 50,000 square foot building, contiguous to, 32,000 square foot building. And the resolution 160, the new agreement, will also provide that other uses can be brought to the facility by RGC3. So these two sort of work.
We don't have a pilot going on there, right?
You don't have a pilot.
We just have a pilot.
If there had been a pilot, it would have been with RGC3, that is not the case, we subject to regular taxation.
Okay. I was on that today, on my way to the meeting. The landscaping is really coming off very nice. They are creating a nice visual sight there.
And what you will see is that those improvements in around 32,000 square foot building.
Right.
Because RGC3, if you go back in time, does have a planning board approval for the entire site. That planning board approval is going to have to be amended because there are now changes because of this. However, before you get to the formal planning board amendment, you are looking to preserve what is there as to the 32,000 square foot building, and there were landscaping and other, the planning board approval that will now be reserved for 32,000 now, as they then later go back to amend and do another 50,000 square foot building roughly in the spot where the old concrete building was from the press.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? And next is the bill list.
Excuse me. Not a lot of bills that of unusual nature should be paid coming up. Most of them that you see on the bill list will be starting on page one. Utility bills, that's like any city that could be prepared about three quarters way down. Then a word after that is our trash collection for the month. If you go, flip forward onto page five. At the top, second down, there's a 101 for 59, 59 for municipal maintenance. We have time with a pump station, we needed something to be in engine, a motor repaired and replaced, so that was like nearly $6,000. And then four down from that is our water bill. And bigger bills this month are just our utility bills. Between last meeting and this meeting, we've paid nearly $2 million out in bills. If you look at the check register by check date, three quarters way down, it says wire transfers for medical, $250,000 for medical for active employees, $130,000 for our retirees, payroll of $578,000 for F Pay, and debt service of $1,059,000. So those are bills that we have paid and are just being paid based on approval for the next. Any questions?
Any questions, councilor? Thank you. So this time, we'll have comments from the public. Anyone that wishes to speak, please come forward, state your name and your concern on agenda items only.
Senior, I think that's your question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Names of extension. Public fortunes now closed, and we'll have comments from council and mayor. If there's anything anyone would like to share.
I think I'll...
And I'd like...
Yes. I'd rather do it now. The administration, Oakhurst High School, and honored our deputy chief son as the outstanding scholar. It is the Dr. Johnson Harmon Scholarship Award, which is presented annually. My brother and brother, blood brother and paternal brother Johnson, is resting at Greenwood Cemetery, but the scholarship is being carried on. So this year, I make the announcement from Oakhurst in Pleasantville because it ties in so much that our deputy chief, Yelster, is to a scholar with the rated GPA grade for an average, his average is 92. And the administration has invited all of us tomorrow evening in the auditorium at Oakhurst High School at 6:30 to come and celebrate and refresh themselves in the city. So that's tomorrow, auditorium, Oakhurst High School. Secondly, many of you, I know picked up the newspaper today, and my day was a great day, because the first word was Pleasantville. I love Pleasantville, and I'm saying it to you too, and I have a special love, and thanks to the press, not on the front page, this is the front page of the landy city press that one of our graduates defeated in the world championship, the 100 meters curl in 12.42, she's now running, I don't know what that means, but she won. She won the race, and not in the United States, this was a world of competition. So I'm very excited, and spoke with the superintendent today, the principal, casual with my legislators, Pleasantville will be doing something to commemorate her success, which encourage others to do well. Our good chief and deputy chief, we definitely call on you guys if we go with the parade when we get there public, because you're there in the huge streets. So that's course coming, but I think that is... Did you say that how many people were there?
I have the art of people.
Here. Here. Ali.
Yeah.
Amir.
Amir.
Mia Ali. Mia Ali. Okay.
Councilor. I'm gonna add to that, it's on today's front page of the press, Mia Ali, and it was in Doha, Qatar?
Qatar.
Qatar.
I can't forget.
Qatar. Qatar. Not Qatar.
No, Qatar.
Oh, Qatar. And that was the first world championship on the title of the city. It was on a radio and everything.
I could say on another note, the electrician said, "We should close Pleasantville High School and send out the students," that's a damn thing, and that destroys myself. So I just make the point that in Pleasantville is the rooted town in this county, and everybody of my age and of age of age went to Pleasantville High School, and we're gonna be around forever, and I hope that, um, thank you, Madam President.
Okay, so I'd like, is there anyone else? Like to have a motion to close the...
Second.
Motion's now closed. And we're gonna move to break. Congratulations Deputy Chief on your sign.
Thank you.
That's good.
Congratulations.
Good evening, thank you for coming out. Today is Monday, October 7th, 2019. The time is 6:55 PM. This is the Pleasantville City Council Meeting, and this meeting has been advertised in the local newspapers and performance with the Open Public Media Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Will you please stand for the end ovation and we make the standing for the flag salute?
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, as thou shalt be thy own, and thou shalt be praised and glorified in the name of his holy name. He is the best that ever created, he is the greatest of all creation. He is the greatest of all creation.
That being said, the assessment came back, and we thought that it would be beneficial for the city based on the numbers that were presented to us, that would make us eligible for savings. We have the primary department in the city hall and the fireworks building that would be getting the upgrades, and that would be in addition to the HVAC upgrades. Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
Resolution 157, authorizing the tax collector to charge a notice fee for the electronic tax year, tax sale year for year 2019.
Any questions or comments? Next please.
Resolution 158, grant approved for a car lot to the Pleasantville, New Jersey, on October 20th, 2019.
Questions or comments?
None, please.
I'd like to have a motion to dispense with the readings of the previous minutes.
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Names of extension. First ordinance number 11, second reading, public care required, authorizing the acquisition of various heavy equipment in the city, appropriating the sum of $300,000 and authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds or bond anticipated to the patient notes, and the aggregate principal amount of up to $285,000, making certain determinations and covenants and authorizing certain related actions in connection with the board. Because this is the second reading, anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance, please come forward, state your name, address, and concern.
Senior, I've heard you made a motion for...
Sir. I'm sure you're motion. Sir. Swan.
Yes.
Sisflunk.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Harmon.
Yes.
Christmas.
Yes.
Ward.
Here.
Six of the town. I'd like to have a motion to dispense with the readings of the previous minutes.
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Names of extension. First ordinance number 11, second reading, public care required, authorizing the acquisition of various heavy equipment in the city, appropriating the sum of $300,000 and authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds or bond anticipated to the patient notes, and the aggregate principal amount of up to $285,000, making certain determinations and covenants and authorizing certain related actions in connection with the board. Because this is the second reading, anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance, please come forward, state your name, address, and concern.
Senior, I've heard you made a motion for...
Sir. I'm sure you're motion. Sir. Swan.
Yes.
Sisflunk.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Harmon.
Yes.
Christmas.
Yes.
Davenport.
I'm sorry, Ward.
Yes. Ward is adopted. Ordinance number 12, second reading, public care required, amending and supplementing, chapter 278, article 13, entitled vehicles and school areas. Okay. Again, this is the second reading. Anyone that wishes to speak on this ordinance, please come forward, state your name, your address, and concern. I'll do it again. This is the second reading, anyone that wishes to speak on this ordinance, please come forward, state your name, your address, and concern. I'll do it again. Sir. All those in favor?
Aye.
Names of extension. Public fortunes now closed, and we'll have comments from council and mayor. If there's anything anyone would like to share.
I think I'll...
And I'd like...
Yes. I'd rather do it now. The administration, Oakhurst High School, and honored our deputy chief son as the outstanding scholar. It is the Dr. Johnson Harmon Scholarship Award, which is presented annually. My brother and brother, blood brother and paternal brother Johnson, is resting at Greenwood Cemetery, but the scholarship is being carried on. So this year, I make the announcement from Oakhurst in Pleasantville because it ties in so much that our deputy chief, Yelster, is to a scholar with the rated GPA grade for an average, his average is 92. And the administration has invited all of us tomorrow evening in the auditorium at Oakhurst High School at 6:30 to come and celebrate and refresh themselves in the city. So that's tomorrow, auditorium, Oakhurst High School. Secondly, many of you, I know picked up the newspaper today, and my day was a great day, because the first word was Pleasantville. I love Pleasantville, and I'm saying it to you too, and I have a special love, and thanks to the press, not on the front page, this is the front page of the landy city press that one of our graduates defeated in the world championship, the 100 meters curl in 12.42, she's now running, I don't know what that means, but she won. She won the race, and not in the United States, this was a world of competition. So I'm very excited, and spoke with the superintendent today, the principal, casual with my legislators, Pleasantville will be doing something to commemorate her success, which encourage others to do well. Our good chief and deputy chief, we definitely call on you guys if we go with the parade when we get there public, because you're there in the huge streets. So that's course coming, but I think that is... Did you say that how many people were there?
I have the art of people.
Here. Here. Ali.
Yeah.
Amir.
Amir.
Mia Ali.
Mia Ali. Thank you.
Councilor. I'm gonna add to that, it's on today's front page of the press, Mia Ali, and it was in Doha, Qatar?
Qatar.
Qatar.
I can't forget.
Qatar. Qatar. Not Qatar.
No, Qatar.
Oh, Qatar. And that was the first world championship on the title of the city. It was on a radio and everything.
I could say on another note, the electrician said, "We should close Pleasantville High School and send out the students," that's a damn thing, and that destroys myself. So I just make the point that in Pleasantville is the rooted town in this county, and everybody of my age and of age of age went to Pleasantville High School, and we're gonna be around forever, and I hope that, um, thank you, Madam President.
Okay, so I'd like, is there anyone else? Like to have a motion to close the...
Second.
Motion's now closed. And we're gonna move to break. Congratulations Deputy Chief on your sign.
Thank you.
That's good.
Congratulations.
Good evening, thank you for coming out. Today is Monday, October 7th, 2019. The time is 6:55 PM. This is the Pleasantville City Council Meeting, and this meeting has been advertised in the local newspapers and performance with the Open Public Media Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Will you please stand for the end ovation and we make the standing for the flag salute?
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, as thou shalt be thy own, and thou shalt be praised and glorified in the name of his holy name. He is the best that ever created, he is the greatest of all creation. He is the greatest of all creation.
That being said, the assessment came back, and we thought that it would be beneficial for the city based on the numbers that were presented to us, that would make us eligible for savings. We have the primary department in the city hall and the fireworks building that would be getting the upgrades, and that would be in addition to the HVAC upgrades. Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Next please.
Resolution 157, authorizing the tax collector to charge a notice fee for the electronic tax year, tax sale year for year 2019.
Any questions or comments? Next please.
Resolution 158, grant approved for a car lot to the Pleasantville, New Jersey, on October 20th, 2019.
Questions or comments? None, please.
Resolution 159, authorizing the city to enter into a host agreement with MPX, New Jersey LLC regarding property located at 11 Devens Lane.
Any question?
What is the host agreement with MPX, MPX? Could we also do, in terms of explaining this, 160 at the same time? Could the clerk also read 160? If the explanation was too...
Okay. Resolution 160, authorizing entry to amended redevelopment agreement with RGC3 LLC, a conditional redeveloper for the 11 Devens Lane redevelopment area.
Okay, let's start with 160. 11 Devens Lane, in generic terms, is the old Atlantic City West Building. It's that entire site, it includes between nine and 10 acres.
...square foot building.
Right.
Because RGC three, if you go back in time, does have a planning board approval for the entire site. That planning board approval is going to have to be amended because there are now changes because of this. However, before you get to the formal planning board amendment, you are looking to preserve that what is there as to the thirty-two thousand square foot building. And there were landscaping and other, we will give a planning board approval that will now be reserved for thirty-two thousand now, as they then later go back to an end and do another fifty thousand square foot building, roughly in the spot where the old concrete building was from the press.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? And next to the bill list.
Excuse me. Um, not a lot of bills that are unusual nature to be paid coming up. Uh, most of all that you see on the bill list will be, starting on page one, uh, the utility bills, that's like ninety-three, like about three quarters way down. Then a word after that is our trash collection for the month. Um, if you go forward on to page five, uh, at the top, uh, second down, there's a fifty-one for fifty-nine, fifty-nine for municipal maintenance. We had time with a pump station, we needed something to be engine, a motor repaired and replaced. So it's like nearly six thousand dollars. And then four down from that is our water bill. Um, and then most of those bigger bills this month are just our utility bills. Uh, between last meeting and this meeting, we paid, uh, nearly two million dollars down in bills. If you look at the check register by check date, three quarters way down is our wire transfers, um, for our medical, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for medical for our active employees, a hundred and thirty thousand for our retirees, uh, payroll of five hundred and seventy-eight thousand for best pay, and debt service of a million oh sixty-nine. So those are bills that we have paid and are just pending payments based on approval for the rest. Any questions?
Any questions, that's all, okay? Thank you. So this time we'll have comments from the public. Anyone that wishes to speak, please come forward, state your name and your concern on agenda items only.
Same matter, I think. Sir.
All right, some favor?
All right.
May's absent. Public portions now closed, and we'll have comments from council and mayor. If there's anything anyone would like to share.
I think I'll.
Then I'd like.
Yes. Right. Okay. I'm trying to do it now. Uh, the administration of Oakcrest High School has honored our deputy chief son as the outstanding scholar. Uh, it is the Dr. Johnson Harmon Scholarship Award, which is presented annually. Uh, my brother and brother, blood brother and fraternity brother Johnson is resting at Greenwood Cemetery, but the scholarship is being carried on. So this year, I make the announcement from Oakcrest in Pleasantville because it ties in so much that our deputy chief, Yost, is true a scholar. Uh, with the weighted GPA grade point average, uh, his average is ninety, it was ninety-two. And now the administration has invited all of us, uh, tomorrow evening in the auditorium at Oakcrest High School at six-thirty to come and celebrate and refresh the building's air. So that's tomorrow, auditorium, Oakcrest High School. Secondly, many of you, I know picked up the newspaper today, and, uh, my day was a great day because the first word was Pleasantville. And, uh, I love Pleasantville, and I'm saying it to you too. And I have a special honor and thanks to the press, not on the sport page, this is the front page of the Land City Press that one of our graduates defeated in the world championship, the hundred meters hurd in twelve point forty-two, which is not a run, I don't know what that means, but she won, she won the race. And not in the United States, uh, this was a world of competition. So I'm very excited and spoke with the superintendent today, the principal, casual with my legislators, uh, Pleasantville will be doing something to commemorate her success, which encourage the others to do well. Uh, my good chief and deputy chief, uh, we definitely call on you guys if we go with the parade, uh, when it's public because you're there in the huge, uh, streets. So that's forthcoming, but, uh, I think that is, uh... Did I say that how much more than we did?
Uh, the arts, okay.
Fear.
Fear?
Yeah.
Ali.
Yeah.
Mia.
Mia Ali.
Ali.
Mia Ali.
Pastor Holland, I just want to add to that. It's on today's front page of the press, Mia Ali. And it was in Doha, K-Tar?
K-Tar.
K-Tar?
I can't forget.
Guitar.
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 Guitar?
Not guitar.
No, guitar.
Oh, guitar. And that was the first world championship of our city. There's on a radio and everything, so.
I could say, I could say on another note. The deputy chief said that Richard Holmes doesn't have a high school and sent out students after damn near leaving. And yet destroys myself. So I just make the point that in Pleasantville is the rooted town in this county. And everybody of my age and who moved to go went to Pleasantville High School. And we're going to be around forever, and I hope that long. Thank you, Mayor President.
Okay, so I'd like, is there anyone else? Like to have a motion of closing?
Second.
Motion's now closed. And we can do a little break? Congratulations, deputy chief, on your sign.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's good. Good evening, thank you for coming out today, this Monday, December seventh, twenty nineteen, the time is six fifty-five P.M. This is the Pleasantville City Council meeting. And this meeting has been advertised in the local newspaper since performance with the Open Problem Media Act, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Will you please stand for the end of the question and remain standing for the flag salute?
Our father, the John of Heaven, how long he died, after he came to Rome. And our hometown, our bestest family, he was a straight-up, pure and unregretted. He was a trust tax system, he was a producer of the trust base against us. And he did not anticipate a change, but there is a stream of law. And I will keep telling him, I have a photograph of him.
I thank the religion to defy, the United States of America. And we do not develop the social status today. One nation under a ground, and the principle of the religion of justice as a law.
Ballot, please.
Swan, Sisflum.
Yes.
Scott. Harmon. Christmas.
Here.
Davenport. Ward.
Here.
Six of the towns.
I'd like to have a motion to dispense with readings of the previous minutes.
Sure.
All those in favor?
All right.
May's absent. Okay. Mayor, do you have any combinations or? Okay.
Resolution one is number eleven, second reading, public care required. Authorizing acquisition of various heavy equipment in the city, appropriating the sum of three hundred thousand dollars of authorized issuance of general obligation bonds for bond anticipation, to the payment, to the patient bills, and the aggregate principal amount of up to two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. They can certain determinations and covetous and authorize certain related actions in connection with the fourth.
Okay, because this is the second reading, anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance, please come forward, state your name, address, and concern.
Same matter, I've heard of your motion, your motion, please.
Sorry. I'll let you there.
All right. Mr. Motion.
Second.
Swan.
Yes.
Sisflum.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Harmon.
Yes.
Christmas.
Yes.
Davenport. I'm sorry, Ward.
Yes.
Ward is adopted. Ward is number twelve, second reading, public care required, amending and supplementing Chapter two seventy-eight, Article thirteen, entire vehicles in school areas.
Okay. Again, this is the second reading. This is the second reading, anyone that wishes to speak on this ordinance, please come forward, state your name, your address, and concern. She's doing it.
Second.
All those in favor? May's absent.
Mr. Motion. Second on the motion.
Christmas. I'm sorry, Swan.
Yes.
Sisflum.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Harmon.
Yes.
Christmas.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Ward is adopted. Ward is number thirteen, first reading, adopting amendments to a redevelopment plan for the California Avenue redevelopment tract in the city.
Second.
Swan.
Yes.
Sisflum.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Harmon.
Yes.
Christmas.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Ward is moved, second reading. Resolution one fifty-five, authorizing the issuance and sale of up to four million five hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars of general obligation bonds, series two thousand nineteen. Making certain covetous to maintain the exemption of interest on said bonds from federal income taxation and authorizing such further actions and making such determinations that may be necessary to the issuance and sale of the bonds.
Motion. Second.
Swan.
Yes.
Sisflum.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Harmon. Christmas.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one fifty-six, support from local government body authorizing direct install grant application funded by the New Jersey Clean Energy Program Initiative, A C N, and a zero interest loan from the South Jersey Gas.
Motion. Second.
Swan.
Yes.
Sisflum.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Harmon.
Yes.
Christmas.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one fifty-seven, authorizing the tax collector to charge a notice fee for the electronic tax set out for the tax year two thousand nineteen.
Motion. Second.
Swan.
Yes.
Sisflum.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Harmon.
Yes.
Christmas.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one fifty-eight, granting approval for car wash in the Pleasantville Junior Jokers on October the twentieth.
Second.
Swan.
Yes.
Sisflum.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Harmon. Christmas.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one fifty-nine, authorizing the city to enter into a hold agreement with MPX New Jersey LLC regarding property located at eleven Davis Lane.
Second.
Swan.
Yes.
Sisflum.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Harmon.
Yes.
Christmas.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution one twenty, authorizing the entry into amended redevelopment agreement with RGC three LLC, the conditional redeveloper, for the eleven Davis Lane redevelopment area.
One sixty.
I'm sorry.
One two.
Okay.
Mr. Motion. Second.
Swan.
Yes.
Sisflum.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Harmon.
Yes.
Christmas.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Resolution approved. I need a motion to pay for bills.
Second.
Swan.
Yes.
Sisflum.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Harmon.
Yes.
Christmas.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion approved. Next on public portion.
Okay, anyone from the public that wishes to speak, please come forward, state your name and your concern on any other. I'm sorry?
I have something to say, but not.
No, it doesn't have to do with the agenda.
That's me, I'm here.
Yeah.
My name is Colima, I'm in Scranton, and I have a couple, um, concerns. Um, I'm off Washington Avenue and South Third. I had sent a letter, um, I had called quite a few times to the office, um, to speak to the mayor on this issue. One is the traffic, um, my son is autistic, and there's a couple of kids that have different disabilities. Um, they drag race down the street, they're constantly speeding, so we asked for, to get some kind of speed bumps, um, in that area. It was a letter from the state, I guess I had wrote to someone, I think it was in the state hap- I'm unprepared because I'm coming from room, um, with the letters. That was the one issue that I was having, I need to find out who do I talk to as far as the speed bumps? Because it's going to take for somebody to get taken killed for somebody to do something. No one in the neighborhood is stepping up, and I refuse it to be my stuff. So that was one issue.
No one, uh, gotten back to you?
No.
From the first part?
No.
About the speed bumps?
No.
That they weren't allowed on the streets because of the ambulance and so forth?
Car?
Car also.
All of them in the street?
Oh, yeah, yeah, because you, you have a patient that has a back injury, and they have a speed bump that made it a lot worse. So, uh, someone said they had gotten back to you.
No, they haven't. So...
You went through the funeral of Corsey first, is that right? Yeah, because he contacted me, and then, uh, I don't know, office, uh, fully got back to you.
So how are they allowed in complexes, but you can't get them off of the street where a school is?
Not on the street streets. Yeah, not on the city streets, that's probably a problem, yeah. Yeah.
You could imagine that, for many reasons, if someone's in an ambulance and they're taking them to the hospital, and they hit a park like that because they're moving fast, or a fire engine going down, and they hit it, and tools fall off the truck and things like that.
We can agree to this, but... And then they, it's so... And plus, you already had big pop.
It's a proven fact. I'm giving you a lot of reasons.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand what you're talking about. My second issue is the traffic, um, that's coming from the, from the school. There is the alleyway. When they built this, um, facility, the drug facility over there where the old Kmart is, old Kmart. A lot of drug addicts done walk in, puzzle, it's so unsafe for these kids. Um, they will come, the alley is no light, it's pitch black dark. They were leaving needles, all kinds of stuff back there because it's pitch black dark. So what I would do with the kids out there, I was picking them up, and I would tell the cops, you know, this is that, what's going on? So, that's right, I'm picking them up, I know how to handle these things. So I would have no choice because there's so many kids out there. I would rather pick them up than somebody gets stuck and get AIDS or something. So, um, I was letting the cops know, and somebody could sure would come through. But is, I'm trying to find out, what do we do as far as that situation? I don't know about maybe some street lights or, um... Where's the location? Um... Washington Avenue where the actual school is, in South Third.
South Third.
Yeah, because that is another issue with this alley. This is my second work period school. I had went down to, um, public works, and four different times, and they filled the hole. But by the traffic coming in and out of there from that school, it is making more big holes in there. So my work trucks literally have been in the shop twice for breaking the axle, coming in and out. So I'm trying to figure out, what do you do with that? Because now my budget's going up, and I'm trying not to complain, but it's coming to a point where between that school and the drug addicts, what do I do? Do you move, do you complain, help us, or do you have everybody down here? You know, because I'm not the only one, but I'm the only one speaking. Everyone can talk on the block, but if no one's going to come and say anything, that's going to get done.
So I'm there, uh, some of that work. The first issue that you mentioned as it relates to speed bumps, although that's highly discouraged, and we'll get the information, and be sure you get the information, so you know where that's coming from. But there's other things that we can do within the city to, you know, to deter speeding and all of that. So we'll talk with the chief of police. At times, we put the digital signs out there to tell them to slow down and things of that nature. So we'll talk with him and see if we can do some other things other than the speed bump to help with that issue. Um, and as it relates to the alley, we'll have someone go out there and assess that and see what's going on, um, to see if we can do something to make that a safer place. Okay? If you could stay, um, till the meeting is over, so I can get your telephone number, so I can make sure that we follow up with you.
Thank you.
What are you talking about, when you're saying the alley one? Is that running adjacent, is that near, um, the tracks? Is it running near?
Oh, my goodness. And that's what I'm saying, sorry to cut you off, I'm glad you mentioned that. Where the tracks are, okay, so I met to a young girl, and the young girl said, oh, no, I'm not doing it. But I did get some men to go out there, once again, use drug addicts, sleep out near the tracks. And you can't even walk, because the city doesn't cut it, number one. Number two, there's so much trash out there. They out there getting high over there. It's like, it's horrible. Puzzle never used to be like this. So it's like, I'm trying to stay, to even bring my business to Puzzle, but it's like you out must do because it's horrible.
We have to go back to the area. I was just trying to find out where you're talking about.
Right where the tracks is, and when you come around, I don't know that, I don't know if that's Forest Street, but when you come around to come to Washington Avenue, you know that little...
Okay, that's okay.
Okay, so it's an alley in between there, and it goes like a tape. So they're up in between those alleys, and it's pitch black dark, so you can't really...
Oh, yeah, that alley is kicking up. Goes from one street to the other street, and goes directly to the school, right? Where the buses let off.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. We have a chief, we have a chief.
No, we'll take the issues to public safety, we'll give them a whole process, and we'll do it immediately. And we'll send folks out, we'll look at it.
That's the second job, the training.
And we'll, um, we'll do what we, what we need to do, I don't know that he will have the answer to that. He can take the plate, but he probably will not have the answer, so we have to do our own business to figure out what's going on.
Okay.
Not to, not to give you an excuse, not to give you an excuse. The norm, when someone's property is full of trash and so on and so forth, they're cited by code, and they get fined, and so on and so forth. The particular property that you're talking about, the tracks, is owned by the New Jersey Transit Company, Trax. And, you know, you try and deal with them, it's difficult. Very difficult for us to get them to keep it.
When I do a...
That's not an excuse.
No, I get what you're saying, we took pride in our neighborhood. But at some point in time, I can't pick up a neighbor, and no...
I understand.
I pick up some trash. You know, I can pick up pink cans. I can tolerate meat. But there's certain things you get out.
We shouldn't tolerate it, there is a period, you know?
Period, exactly.
Period.
Yes, do what Mrs. Faith wants you to do.
It's disturbing this guy quite a bit.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public?
Same matter, I'm prepared, we can move to public portion, but... Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Public portions now closed, and we'll have comments from council, council. Um, mayor, please.
Yeah, October twenty-second, Jonathan Diego, who's also another walker, uh, law officer, one twenty-nine South Main Street, that's directly across from the job notes, and he's invited to council, and everyone, uh, to his friend over there, five thirty. He is extremely excited, and it's a long time coming. Uh, you'll see his sign up there, Jonathan Diego, our fellow attorney. So, uh, five thirty, October twenty-second.
Thank you. And councilman Harmon, you, I know you've already...
I'm, I'm finished, uh, finished for the presence. Oh, there it comes to you.
Okay, councilman Stuck?
Good evening, thanks for coming out, Kalina, thanks, uh, name is Kalina. Thanks for coming forward, um, and we'll make sure we put that all on that. That, that's, that's entitled. Thank you. Good evening, thanks for coming out, and, um, congratulations again to the deputy chief, Wellington.
Evening, thanks for coming out. Was it last meeting that we were discussing the, the train, the cars there?
Oh, yeah.
Because there was somebody who was looking at the train cars, uh, we're working on, so, so...
I sent emails out, we'll follow up with you there.
So it's not like, it's not like we're not watching, we're trying to get together.
Okay, councilman Christmas?
Yes.
I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
That's it, thanks.
Okay.
All right, I can't see you, but, uh, thank you for coming out. Thank you very much. And, uh, have a good evening.
Councilman Stuck?
Thank you for coming out, and, uh, and I hope everybody have a blessed evening.
Councilman, oh, Lord. Two, two items I have to... Before you close the meeting, I just want to announce two things really quickly. One is, um, the city's, and I quote that maybe, um, someone from the, uh, Recreation Committee would have stated this, but the city's second annual trumpet tree is going to be held on Halloween night, October thirty-first, right here at City Hall. Please register, councilman. Sisflum had a flyer in his hand, if you can zoom in over there, Lupe. Uh, but you register at the Recreation Center, it's free for Pleasantville residents uh, Halloween night, October thirty-first, from six to seven thirty P.M. Um, the last announcement is our very own and honorable, uh, Jesse L. Tweedle is being recognized along with the county executive, Danny Levinson, for their crime-stopping efforts. Um, and that, um, award night is being held on October twenty-fourth. And if you want to support, just contact the mayor's office or my office, and, um, we'll make sure, uh, one of the things that we will be doing is putting an ad in the booklet, uh, congratulating the mayor for his crime-stopping efforts.
Counselor, I'm, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, we take property maintenance and public safety very seriously, and we have a complaint process that anytime somebody complains, we track that complaint and see how it resolves. But I was specifically told that someone had gotten back to you to explain to you about some of the things that we're going to do. Uh, a speed sign right there, that's a very bad corner when it comes to school, where people... Not so much the speed, because we had an officer out there trying to track the speed going down Washington Avenue by the school. But anytime there's a, a maintenance problem, we have our guys looking for people that are violating ordinances for maintenance. And we take that very seriously, as councilman Christmas alluded to. So when you have a complaint, just pick up the phone and call us. And we'll, you know, we'll track that and see how it's resolved. But we take pride in thinking that we're doing a much better job than we was doing years ago, because of our processes that we have in place. But the alley you're talking about is off of Washington Avenue, between, uh, Washington and...
No, it's made, because I'm confused about where that alley is.
What is that, Third Street?
South Third.[1722.18]